I will call the June 7th, 2021 meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts stated March 12th, 2020 suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. The Town of Hingham is recording this, and I believe it'll be on Harbor Media as well. If anyone else is planning to record this, could you, if you're on the panel, just unmute yourself and let me know? And if you're an attendee, if you could just raise your hand? Okay, seeing, seeing none. I just, before we get started tonight, I just wanted to congratulate the class of 2021 who graduated on Saturday. It was a really impressive group of young people. And if you're at all interested, the student speeches were excellent, and you can watch them on Harbor Media and/or read them in the Hingham Anchor, so it would be great to do that. And also, on behalf of the school committee, I want to thank the staff, parents, and community members who found multiple ways to celebrate our seniors so that they could end their Hingham Public Schools careers on a high note. So with that all being said, the first item of business is 2.1 minutes, approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 24th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 21 school committee meeting?
24th, I think.
24th, sorry.
Thank you, Ness. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll do roll call. Michelle, Eric?
Hi.
Jen Benham?
Hi.
Ness Corente?
Hi.
Carlos Silva?
Hi.
Tim Dempsey?
Hi.
Liza O'Reilly?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Item three is question and comments, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we've set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wished to speak, please raise your hand using the raise hand function, state your name, address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by the Mass. General Law, as the responsibilities of the school committee are to: one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all that being said, if you, if any members of the public have comments, if you could just use the raise hand function? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So next is item four, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Austin?
Good evening, and thank you to the Chair, and welcome on a Monday night, and summer's arrived with temperatures in the 90s today. So we'll get going tonight, as always, the COVID-19 update, which I hope will be the last one that we provide, but we'll talk about that in just a moment. So if you could, I'll ask Sheri to please pull up the slide presentation, please.
Yep, I'll get that right up for you.
Thank you. While we were waiting for that to happen, I will share a little bit of just data recently that I don't have in the slide presentation, but as of today, ages 16 through 19 in Hingham, 67% of 16 and 19-year-olds in Hingham are fully vaccinated, 92% have at least one dose or have had at least one dose so far, 92%. 59% of all Hingham residents have been fully vaccinated as of today, so very good numbers and continue to support us as we move forward. All right, so we'll move right into this presentation. It should be fairly short. Next slide, please, Sheri. So thank you. As we've always do, we show the Town of Hingham Weekly Public Health Report. As you can see to the far right, the 6-3 numbers, we are down now to 1.8 cases per 100,000, which is actually, I believe it's in the gray. Now, we're in the gray for town, so obviously, well below our lowest period and incredibly good signs for the Town of Hingham and reflective of the great work of the town of getting people vaccinated, so much appreciated. And with that, the bottom slide is the percent positive, which is a very, very low, 0.46% for the town this past week. So once again, really showing great progress in the Town of Hingham in fighting this terrible disease. So the schools, this last week, I can report happily that we had zero report of any staff or student infections this past week. So we have topped off at, for a total of cases of the year, 313 cases. Of those 255 were students, 58 were staff. And as you can see on the weekly positive test, on the bottom, there are zero for this period, so very excited to finally give you a zero in report today. And in that, along with our zero goes the Hingham Schools Weekly Quarantine Report, which if you look all the right, all the way to the right, 5:30 to 6:05, it is, I think there are just, there are four students from the high school who are in quarantine due to activity outside of the school setting, I believe. So we don't have zero to report, but very, very close, and certainly a lot better than when we looked back in April when we had close to 240 students in quarantine. So for this week, and hopefully, there will be no more as we go forward. So we are still testing. This Thursday, we will test staff again. It will be the last time we test staff. And so I want to thank tonight, the nursing staff, particularly Kelly Shanahan, Deb Whiting, all the nurses for assisting us in this process. Tony Keedy has taken leadership from the administrative side and all the support that he received in order to conduct testing that began way back in January. So this last week, this for 6-3, we had 39 people testing, 100% were negative. So overall, total tests that we've done so far with one week to go is 2,243 tests conducted, 99.9% of them have been negative, with only three positive tests out of that entire pool, and 0.10% positive test rate overall since January 14th. And then the COVID testing for the students and the pool testing, this last week, we had 86 pools, so we've been very consistent with between 85 to 90 pools for several weeks now. We conducted 86 pools, 520 tests. We had 100% negative pools, which again contributes to our zero number. Overall, we've collected 849 pools, which now includes 5,321 individual student tests with a negative pool test of 99.7. We did have three negative pools throughout the entire testing process. We administered 32 Abbott Binax Now Rapid Tests, and from those, we ended up with two positive individual results of the 5,321 test results that we were testing, that we did. So very good numbers, and again, continued to drop as we've seen for the last several weeks. So again, total weekly positive, for the first time since the beginning of testing, we are at zero overall, all the way to the right. So the last several weeks, we've really seen the downward trend, and certainly from our high in January of 37 in one week, all the way down to zero this week. So overall, for the year, we averaged 8.5 per week, but certainly that downward trend had begun, begun in January and started dropping down and has now dropped to zero. And then staff, for the fourth week in a row, there have been zero staff infections. Over the last seven weeks, we've had, I think, six, seven, we have one case in the staff. So obviously, the vaccinations are working very well as we continue to drop overall. So just some facts, with the ending of the school year next week, this will be my last COVID-19 update for the 2020-21 school year, unless of course, the school committee wants me to do more, but I don't plan on bringing another COVID results or update at our next meeting. Since we began tracking the positive COVID-19 cases, we've reported 313 positive infections, 255 students for an average of 8.5 student infections per week since the beginning of the school year, 58 staff for an average of 1.7 staff infections per week since the beginning of the school year. It's a pretty astounding number, and it shows you the progress we've made throughout the year. It certainly wasn't easy for anyone, and I appreciate everyone's vigilance in moving forward in very difficult times. Hundreds of students and staff have had to quarantine with the highest week, approximately 240 individuals occurring in April. As I said, we are down to four this week, so we have almost come down to zero on the quarantine. The district has offered individual testing for staff beginning on January 14th. To date, we've conducted 2,243 tests, which have resulted in three positive cases for a 0.10 positivity rate, which is 99.9% negative testing rate for staff, so I'm very excited about that. And then finally, the district began pool testing for students on February 25th, and today, we've collected 849 pools containing tests for 5,321 students. These tests resulted in the identification of three positive pools, which led to the discovery of two positive cases for a 0.30 positivity rate or a 99.7% negative testing rate. So I'll move into...
Take one, one at a time, and see if the committee has any questions on the COVID report? If you do, you can unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing any, any attendees, if you have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands over there too, and hopefully, this will be the very last COVID report that you do. I don't think we need to hear anything else as long as things keep going in this direction. It's fabulous news, and thank you to everybody who was vigilant about getting vaccinated and getting their kids vaccinated. It's great, so.
Thank you.
If you want to go ahead to the reopening committee?
Yeah, just a quick reopening committee update. The reopening committee met again on 5:26. Since the time between our first meeting and the meeting on 5:26, sorry, the guidance for reopening in the fall includes that all COVID-19 restrictions have been lifted. That is from DESI, so we are not anticipating any additional COVID-19 restrictions at this time for the fall. Masks must continue to be worn on inside our school buildings through the summer at this point, though, so we will continue when we're inside a building, we must wear masks. For the fall, there will be likely no mask mandate for middle and high school students as a high number have been vaccinated, just as a precautionary, and I don't have the answer to this yet, I think we'll have to watch this closely, but elementary students may be required to wear masks inside the school buildings pending guidance from DESI and availability of vaccinations, so that is yet to be decided. The Commissioner of Education has told us that that's possible, but a decision has not been made about elementary students wearing masks inside the buildings in the fall. And then the reopening committee, given that the, we have been told that there will be no COVID-19 restrictions on fall at this time, I've recessed that committee until such time as necessary that we meet again, such as if we get new guidance from DESI, that we will be able to come together quickly and respond to that. Whatever DESI has for us in the fall, we will be prepared to address and manage at that time. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions on the status of the reopening committee? No, not seeing any, okay. If anyone in the audience wants to ask a question or make a comment, you can raise your hand, I'll recognize Suzie O'Horo, if you could state your name and address.
Hi, Suzie O'Horo, Seven Wanderstive, Hingham. I just wanted to ask what was behind the decision-making to continue wearing masks in the schools through the summer when the CDC and nobody recommends wearing masks inside unless you're unvaccinated? I mean, people are going to the grocery stores, everywhere else, the state of emergency's been lifted, you have an 80% vaccination rate basically in Massachusetts, so what's the reasoning behind continuing to wear masks inside the schools and?
Yeah, that's the DESI guidance.
That's the, that's the DESI guidance, so until they change it, then we won't be either.
Okay.
Okay, Matt Cosman?
Hi, Carrie, Matt Cosman, 12 Summit Drive. Just a question on the elementary school, if, in terms of masks, so if DESI does not require elementary schools' kids to wear, obviously if they require them, they're going to have to, is there any scenario where it's going to be sort of like open for the administration or the school committee to decide yourselves? You know, is it going to be black or white in terms of either, you know, it will be required to mask or it won't, you know, we will not have masks? Is, is, do we have any idea on that?
From what I understand, it depends, it'll all depend on DESI, and that, that would be a good question for them. Dr. Austin, I don't know if you have any other information?
Yeah, I would just say the same thing. If DESI orders that we will wear masks, we'll wear masks. If they don't, we won't wear masks. I think that is fairly black and white for me. I'm waiting for any further guidance from DESI.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other hands, so the next is the social educational collaborative budget, which is in everyone's packet. If there are any questions, we can ask Dr. Austin that now. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Number five is communications, 5.1 communications received by the superintendent. Dr. Austin, do you have any?
I don't have any communications, but if I could just say, just a quick moment to say thank you to everyone, I'd really appreciate that at this time. The end of the school year is now within very close sight. People have been amazing, from parents to students, to staff, to teachers, to custodians, to every single person in our organization. You thank them for, you addressed the graduation on Saturday, which was a beautiful event, and certainly much anticipated that it would go off as fairly normal as possible. I just want to say thank you to everyone. This has been an amazing year with so many challenges, but we have persevered, and I'm proud of every one of the people in our organization, I'm proud of our students, and I want to thank all the parents and community for their support, so thank you.
That's great. Next is 5.2, other communications. Does anyone on the committee have anything? Okay, seeing none, I just wanted to, I think, I think most of you are aware of this, but I spoke with the Mass Association of School Committees Representative Glenn Kuchar, and he just kindly agreed to come to Hingham, it'd be right before our next meeting at 4 o'clock to do the training, the required training for Tim, and he is willing to speak with us about a few things too, just to kind of catch up and touch base. So we have, we'll most likely have an executive session at 6 that day, so probably, this is probably around 5, 5:30. I can send a separate email, so we can, we can talk about that, but that was very nice of him to agree to do that. Next is unfinished business, 6.1, subcommittee assignments. Those are, those are in your packets. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those? Just wanted to thank everyone for getting your preferences in a timely manner, and yeah, and I'm excited about the groups we have this year, so. Next is 6.2, kindergarten enrollment. Dr. Austin?
Thank you, and as you requested, just to give you an update on what enrollment looks like, I have a brief slide presentation, a really brief one slide after this one. So a year-to-date summary so far, just to remind us all, in the budget, we have planned for 15 sections of kindergarten. We have four at East, four at Foster, four at South, and three at Plymouth River, that's what we've planned for. And to date, as I had mentioned before, we have received a total of 247 packets. That includes 80 at East, 51 Foster, 44 at Plymouth River, and 72 at South. We continue to see, to get phone calls regularly, and so we will continue to see enrollments and new enrollments over the summer, and so I would suspect and we expect it'll be considerably higher than that number right now. If you recall, in the budget, we were shooting for 275. I think it's possible we could be very close to that, but we'll continue to monitor that. Of the 247 packets that have been returned and enrolled, 244 of them have indicated they will attend full days. So again, almost everyone is attending full days. You also asked some questions about the waivers that we have, and so to date, we received the following request for kindergarten waivers. From South Elementary, there were seven requests, six were granted. At East, three requests and three granted for PRS, it was seven requests, six granted, Foster was seven, and seven granted, for a total of 24 requested and 22. I do want to say, I think we had an update of that afterwards, I apologize, East was five requested and five granted, so it was actually requested 26, granted was 24. So we will continue to monitor this closely throughout the summer, and I will report enrollment to the school committee again in July to give you an update of where we're at at that time.
Great, thank you.
Carrie, can I ask a good question?
Yeah, go ahead, Liza.
East at 80, is that high? Or is it unusually high, or has it the clasp been that size?
I can, I can address that, Dr. Austin, so it's not, it's not unusual, Liza, for us to have 80. We've had, or it's go through of anywhere from 80 almost to 90 in the past years, so it's not unusual.
Okay. I thought the schools were a little more evenly dispersed and?
Yeah, I would agree that if you look at kindergarten enrollment across the four schools, we are the highest. I think what I noticed that here, us and Foster seem to be lower than, than expected, but ours is on the higher end of normal, is the way I phrase it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions about this?
Carrie, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Dr. Austin, do you happen to have in front of you the numbers of waivers from last year? If you don't, not a problem.
I don't have that. Dr. LaBille, while you're online, do you remember what that was, or any of the principals at elementary?
I don't, no, we don't have that prepared.
Not, not a problem, thank you.
Okay.
I'll get you, I mean, it, based on memory, Carlos, it does not look substantially different.
Right, I was just going to say the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
I'll certainly have that for you in July.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I can't see everyone on the committee, so if you could just unmute yourself if you have any questions. Okay, that looks like it. If any members of the public have any questions about this, if you could raise your hands. Okay, seeing none, thank you for, thank you very much for the update. 6.3 is to discuss school committee meeting format for June 21st, 2021 and beyond. We're going to go back to in-person, which will be great, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone in person again. We did talk about how we would like to continue having, well, I guess it'll be a hybrid meeting, so, so people can participate remotely, either on the committee or in the, from the audience too. The one positive thing that has come out of this whole situation is really increased community engagement, and especially parents of children tend to be the people that are most interested in the work we're doing, and that's hardest for them to come to meetings, so we'd like to continue doing that. And I know Sheri had reached out to Harbor Media, we talked about live streaming our meeting and then having a Zoom function, is that, do you have any more information on that, either Dr. Austin or Sheri?
Yeah, we actually, Harbor Media is coming out on Friday. They've got some ideas of how they want to do that, they want to be able to see what they can do in person, what they're able to do, so they are coming Friday to test that system, so I'll be able to connect with you either over the weekend or on Monday and let you know what, what they end up with.
Okay, great. And we're looking at, I know most of us are on the MASC listserv too, some, some districts have started to do this already, so we can kind of keep an eye on what they're doing too and steal any best practices we can, so.
Right.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one? No? Okay.
I know I will not be physically in attendance on the 21st, so I may be, and I am not sure of my availability for Zooming in either on that day, but I may test your process of having someone Zooming in, so.
Okay, great.
I'll be sure to let you know this weekend of what the, of what the process will be.
Okay, great, thank you. Carlos?
Likewise, I might, I might be in Brazil, so.
Okay, so that's that. So next is new business, and 7.1 is to hear the East School Council report. That's Mr. Keedy?
Yep.
And before he goes, when I told him, when you guys are done questions, I know he has a relative with a birthday today, so said he could go after that, so he doesn't want to exit without telling anybody, so.
Sounds good.
It is, it is by my son, so. Enjoy them while I can, because he's 19, we won't have too many birthdays, he's going to be hanging out with his parents. Let me share my screen so we can get rolling here. All right. So this is our school improvement plan. This was our school and council this year. We had Diane Snyder has been a longstanding community rep. Diane is a phenomenal representation, I mean representative for the community, she always does great questions and brings a great perspective as a former teacher. Rena Patel and Kate Keller were our parent reps this year, and then Cindy Barrett, Molly Keefe represented the staff, and thanks to Ness for being the school community liaison this year. So when the kids started coming back in full-time, our PTO, kind of we, we relied around the phrase of, we've got this. Now, our kids, I've said since they returned, have done a great job of coming to school every day, putting forth their best effort, they're in good spirits, they do a great job of abiding by the guidelines we put out there with masks wearing, they do their best with distancing, and we also really appreciated all of the efforts of families. We know it's been a tough year, but I think our families really rose to the challenge, so our message to the kids is they've done a great job and they should be proud of their accomplishments. So you'll see these signs all over East School about, you've got this. So with the goals, our goals pretty much don't change significantly from year to year, so we'll kind of combine an update with, with sort of the thinking of going forward. So our first goal always revolves around literacy. We do typically use the MCAS as one of the pieces of data. Just a reminder that MCAS is in fact a summative evaluation, it kind of tells you what you already have learned. Sometimes it's really usefulness is not really necessarily about individual students, but more about the school or grade level in a particular area topic. We'll see what the MCAS results yield this year. They did narrow down the test to one day of testing for each of the major subjects. It was all computer-based testing, so we'll look forward to seeing those results in the fall and see what we can get out of it. We always, we continue to use the DIBELS assessment to help with our literacy, you know, as we keep track of, as we progress, monitor our students. We also use additional district-based measures. We've done that throughout the year, not as formally as we have in the past, once again, due to the change in our routine because of the pandemic, not all of, we weren't able to carry out our full schedule of data review meetings, so it was done on a more informal basis, but our literacy team has done a great job of keeping track of the progress of each of the kids throughout the year, so that's been used by the teachers to continue, and I've adjusted the instruction going forward. So going forward, once again, we are looking forward to this assessment data to be an integral part of what we'll do in the fall with our Tuto intervention system that's planned. That is really what is most helpful when we do formative assessments to determine how do we need to alter our instruction, how do we help identify students in need during the year as opposed to at the end of the year, so that we can provide individualized attention or small group instruction through the intervention system. We are looking to add the addition of a research-based reading comprehension formative assessment by one larger challenges. DIBELS has many strengths to it, but in terms of reading comprehension, especially for the older students, we're going to seek out what is an effective assessment tool that does yield useful data, but is also able to be done in a timely manner. Really, turn around time is what's key, do the assessment, parse the data, and then bring it back in a useful format to the teachers. We'll follow a similar thing for mathematics going forward. We'll once again continue to use the assessment data that's primarily from everyday math, but we're looking to expand that, we're going to look for research-based math formative assessment that we can use as well. But we're looking to expand that. We're gonna looking for research-based math form assessment that we can use as well. Um, we're able to use Title One this year to focus a lot on math in third grade, but Title One tutors, they did a phenomenal job. So um, once again, we're gonna carry this forward each year as we try to, we're all, go throughout the year trying to identify areas of need, identified students who, who may need a little bit of individualized, small group instruction as we move through the year. A couple of years ago, we did add science. Uh, we are lucky that we have um uh elementary, you know, really effective elementary math science specialist in Brian Conroy. Works with all uh, I mean, with fifth grade, he's available as a resource to all of uh the grade levels. Science curriculum is part of the monthly district curriculum meetings. I think it's important to know, one of the unique challenges of the science MCAS is that it's cumulative of the science curriculum from K through five. So that does kind of present a little bit of a challenge when you're trying to assess, whereas you need to kind of focus your time and energy. But we will be looking for, talk to the classroom teachers about how we provide, you know, um, address areas of need of science going forward. With our fourth call, we are really always looking to strengthen our practices, uh strengthen our connections with our families in the community. The school PTO has been a phenomenal partner always, and especially this year, it really stepped up. We'll talk about that a little bit later. So for example, we are looking, uh, now that next year, we are hopeful that we can have um non-staff in the building. We'd love to have parents and caregivers come in and talk to the kids about relative topics. Um, and it could be on an every number of things. Uh, in the past, we've had parents who have traveled to the parts of the world, come back and present to a grade or class about where they went, uh, different uh jobs. We've had parents who were veterans, for example, come back in, come back and talk to the kids, uh, present about their particular uh profession. So hoping to continue to do that this year, uh, next year or pick it up again. Uh, one thing we have started to do this year especially is we have added parent and caregivers to our staff selection process. So this year at East School, we have uh multiple positions we're looking to fill. Administrative assistant, uh, classroom teacher, special education teacher. And we have invited uh parent, East School parents and caregivers to be part of each one of those selection committees. We do value their perspective, you know, and input in that process. So we're gonna continue to do that uh going forward, each one of our selection groups. Uh, social emotional continues to be one of the more fun topics that we deal with each year and each year at East School like everybody else. We do review the results, the student risks screening scale that is done uh twice a year by our adjustment counselors. We might use that data to put together small groups, adjustment councils will work with for six to eight weeks. Um, and then also connect with parents and caregivers, there's additional supports that have been needed outside of school. One of my favorites, as you all know, I'm a huge champion of the Makerspace program. We did have to suspend it this year. But next year, when we kind of go back to more normal schedule, this will be the most favorite part of my day is when we get to bring Makerspace back. And why it connects to social emotional needs of the students is because it is sort of a more of an open-ended opportunity for kids to show and build unique skills that you may not be able to do someplace else. So a great combination of creativity, uh, engineering thinking, collaborating with, with peers on um unique projects. And thanks to Jenny Cena and Greg Bliss, the other teachers that do Makerspace with me. We are excited to expand Makerspace when we go into next year. Um, also, we're gonna be bringing back our crew initiative um for next year. Uh, and that was started by our assistant principal Becky Case a couple of years ago. Once again, we had suspended the S E year because of COVID. But it is a program where we create vertical groups of, of um students, A through five. And they will work with one adult staff member uh for the entirety of their time at East Elementary School. So you'll be with the same crew when you enter Eastern kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. And those crews meet um at minimum um on the early least Wednesday, uh, first Wednesday of the month. Um, and what we've come up with every year, mostly I give credit to Becky, um, is a theme around which the students meet, uh, create a project. Um, and then at the end of the year, we have a large school presentation of the various projects. Those products can be anything from a play, a skit to creative sculpture, a story. Um, it really is as open-ended as uh they want it to be. And I think um this year we're looking forward to doing something around uh green, about being environmentally aware. That seems to be um a primary concern for a lot of our students, especially our student council. We're gonna continue to coordinate all the programs that we have on Classroom Toolbox, Responsive Classroom. We're all great programs to build social emotional skills. Um, and each one of our teachers is a great job. So there's a lot of great things. We're just trying to coordinate them, make them all mesh together more effectively. And we are looking to be a part of Hingham Public Schools' efforts to support, to address the gaps in equity, provide a more diverse learning environment for our students. Um, we would like to kind of work towards creating our own East School-based equity working group. We will be kind of moving forward for sort of the practice training that was started this past week. Um, it is sort of a, uh, builds upon a lot of the work that we already do. Um, with some of our programs such as responsive classroom, such as toolbox, sort of practice works on building relationships. And then when there is uh an issue within a school between a student or between student and staff, focuses on repairing that relationship so that we can uh move forward. It also helps identify areas of need. You know, we kind of use a fundamental approach when we have uh issues revolving around behavior. It's like, what happened? Why did it happen? And how could we keep it happening again? Helping identify those lagging social skills that a student may exhibit uh in ways that come out. Um, we are gonna be adding some more visuals to the main office at the entrance, offering signs in different languages. When we do, you know, when a student enrolls in the Hingham Public Schools, uh, we do a language survey to find out what languages maybe spoken at home other than English. And our goal is to go through all that information and to provide languages and the various language, provide signs in the various languages of our families uh to make a more welcoming environment at East School. Uh, and we're also looking to add visuals, um, historical figures, except from, from various cultures throughout the building. So once again, we can expose our students um to different perspectives, different information, different cultures as part of the daily routine. Um, I did reference our phenomenal PTO. Um, and this year they really have stepped up and gone above and beyond to help sort of support our staff and our families and our kids. So they did provide supplemental materials. The beginning of the year is the first thing they asked for is, what does the teachers need to help do their job? So they helped purchase classroom materials, they helped purchase sets of, of materials that kids could bring home and, and work on in uh lessons at home. They added events like private movie night, the drive-through Halloween parade. This past weekend, we had our first ever East School Fishing Derby. Um, happy to say I participated. Sad to say I didn't catch anything. Uh, on the Wednesday, they did the great PJ ride and one of the um most well-received initiatives was our one book, one school, one community. The entire school was given, or each kid was given a copy of Apple Blossom, the possum. Um, and they read it with their families. Then we provided supporting activities around that. You know, throughout the several weeks it took to complete the book. We had our great little virtual hobby nights again this year, which is always a great time to see the various things that kids enjoy doing outside of school. They did offer amended programs or get smart about our program is all PTO-driven. Um, and they did bring, uh, we were able to bring our fourth grade physics Olympics back and we switched it to outdoors this year. So it was um better enjoyed by the kids. They've had additional playground equipment, such as frisbee golf, they provide emergency snacks for our kids. And today actually was our first day of a modified field day for kids. Um, they shortened it, they provided um, um, activities um that are developed appropriately for our kids. So today we had kindergarten in the morning, first grade in the afternoon. And it was a lot of fun. The kids had a great time uh when I checked in with them sort of various times about the day. So once again, kudos to all of our PTO, they've done a great job. Here's a picture of our fourth grade physics Olympics. Uh, it is kind of an annual event that happens every year. Large scale, so the physics uh opportunity to explore different concepts around physics that is run by our fourth grade parents. Uh, this year we did have uh magic faculty, so uh brought Professor Quarantine, who is also known as Prime DeMarco, one of our fourth grade teachers, created an alter ego. Professor Quarantine, and he helped kick off our East School PJ Ride, uh, which was a holiday scavenger hunt throughout the school neighborhoods. And uh, we thank Professor Quarantine for giving that event off to a great start. Um, Mrs. Garrett's class created uh, they had projects um all revolving um around uh different cultures. And so they, uh, with the support of the PTO, they created uh a cultural diversity quilt. Each fabric square represented a book that the fifth grader chose to be part of a collection of books that travel, is available travel throughout the building. Kids can select and read. So great kudos to Mrs. Garrett for that. Our East School Council, which is made up of our students, working with Mrs. Case and the Floric, they organized the fundraiser for Matty's promise. They, in order to earn money, they asked students to collect money, paste the number of baskets they shot, jumps or laps they did during a gym class over the week of May twenty-fourth. Sid Dodge helped with all this. Um, and they um completed their fundraiser and we're still telling the amount, but it was an impressive effort. This was all student-driven. So our students, you know, working with Mrs. Case and Dr. Floric, came up with the goal, came up with the process. They did the whole thing, all the adults did, was kind of help sort of organize it and collect the money. Um, and of course, the pandemic did cause some staffing difficulties. So we did after resort using a dinosaur, helped with our morning routine. But thanks to Mr. Ruley, because he stepped up to um make some entertainment during our morning arrival. And that is our East School plan.
Great, thank you. And thank you to you and to your staff and to the amazing PTO for everything you did to, during, over the year. It's, that's, that's great. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Kitty? Michelle?
Actually not a question, really a comment, two things. Um, one, just um doubling down on Carrie's comments there. I wa- watching these score reports and we haven't even gotten to Mary's yet. So I'm imagining what that's gonna be like, but it is just.
That's why I went first, Michelle.
Oh, no, but it is just amazing, all of the creativity that went into putting, making this year special for the kids and memorable in good ways, not bad ways, like wearing masks and getting COVID tested and sticks shoved up their nose and all those things. So really just amazing job of the leadership, the staff, the teachers, everyone involved. So thank you. I feel like we on the committee were so admired in the bad details about all the things that are going on that we missed so much of that. So thank you for everything you've done. And just a particular, um, commending you, um, Tony, on the um bringing in the families and the community into the plan. I think that's really great. I think that um, I don't think we can say these words too often. The unanimous support for the school budget this year, this year's town meeting, I think has really shown that the town is changing and that people are really, no matter who they are, right, whether they have children in the schools or they are parents of kids who went through the schools or grandparents or don't have kids in the school. They are really supportive of the schools in our district and I think that's huge. And I think capitalizing on that is just gonna make the schools even stronger. So kudos for bringing that in.
Thank you very much. And, and I would like to um sort of end my report with, um, every year we have several retirements for people moving on. But this year, East School has to celebrate the retirement of somebody very, very special uh to our school community. Um, our, our school secretary Sharon Hall is retiring. Um, for those of you who are not aware, um, I will um give credit to the success of the opening school uh to several people. Um, and Sharon Hall is absolutely one of them. She was our founding school secretary. She came over uh to us from Foster School. And I remember uh very clearly, our first year uh in the building, um, it was basically me and Sharon getting things up and running. And she did so much to make East School a success. So she will be sorely missed. And I, I have a, um, again, it'll be uh tough to start the year without Sharon, but we are thankful for everything she has done for us and for Hingham Public Schools.
Thank you.
That's amazing. Liza?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing. Um, Carrie is, or uh, Tony is a, as an East School parent alum and PTO member. I applaud everything everyone's done. It's really, it's fun to see how it all involves. But um, I would also just like to personally thank you for stepping up and championing all the testing and hosting that at your school and getting it organized for the teachers and the pool testing for the students. You volunteered to take on that extra project, which was a lot of details and a lot of extra time. And we, we really appreciate it because you kept the whole district it healthy by doing that. And so thank you very much. I don't know how much people really know about all of that. But um, it's really greatly appreciated. And with everything that everyone went through, there were a lot of people who stepped up to volunteer to do things. So when we get the chance, I'm gonna recognize them. So thank you, Tony, for stepping up.
Uh, thank you, Liza. I, I really do appreciate, uh, you know, your kind words. And I really do have to say it was very much a team effort. Callie Shanahan and, and Deb Whiting and we actually added Kristen Gottfried was now a member of the, of the pool testing team towards the end. And um, I will say that, you know, we haven't probably mentioned this enough, but we really were lucky that we had um a really great third-party provider. Meet Caregivers was the contractor that we were connected with through the DESI pool testing program. Um, and they were great. So they, they showed up every week. They are the, the staff that actually went classroom to classroom to the testing or staffed the high school, middle school and collected the pool, collected the swabs, they registered the pools, they did a lot of logistical work that we simply didn't have the staff for. So um, they were a great partner. So as much as um, I really do have to kind of give thanks for a phenomenal partnership um across the board. You know, I think a lot of people stepped up, like you said, and the list is long. So I, I can uh, I cannot take any, any, I don't want to give all the credit at all, none of it, actually.
You can take some of it though. I was gonna say, please take some of it because there's really, unfortunately, nothing else we can offer you. So thank you.
Well, you know, you, you can let me escape and go hang out with Colin for his nineteen birthday.
There you go, there you go. Carrie, can you, can you a lot make that happen?
Yeah, thank you very much and happy birthday to Colin.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night.
All right, uh, seven point two is to hear the South School Council report. Listen, this one.
Hello, everybody. And I wish Colin a happy birthday. I remember when he was five, so I can't believe he's nineteen. Okay, can everybody hear me okay and see the screen? Okay, fabulous. I just want to say thank you to Tony. He did a fantastic job. And I think it's hilarious that we have the same first picture. But I think that that is fatuitous because one silver lining, and I think you've heard this before, that's come out of uh COVID is we've had a chance to spend more time together because we could do it over Zoom. It's almost impossible. Uh, prior to that, in a normal school year, so we all spent a lot of time together and we've shared a lot of ideas. And a couple of you mentioned last time how it is so wonderful that we have, you know, similar, similar ideas. But yet we also all have our own, our own culture, which makes for a richer culture when the children go into the middle school. So I kind of came up with the analogy of um an ice cream shop. We're all in the same ice cream shop, but with different flavors. And we all get along really well because who doesn't like ice cream? So um, I'm greatly appreciative to everybody I've been working with, but especially the, the other three elementary principals. And we've all become very much a collaborative team. So that's been a big silver lining. So our PTO did a wonderful job too. They welcomed us back. I'll never forget, I caught my breath when I drove up and saw this sign because it was a surprise to us. And uh, that was in the very beginning in September. So I have a lot of extra special thank yous to say for twenty-twenty-one, but I want to start with all of you. Uh, because as you so aptly put it, Michelle, y- you did a lot of the cleaning, a lot of the, a lot of the, um, you know, taking people's opinions and making decisions. And I'm, I know sometimes some of that was very hard and we greatly appreciate what you did for all of us as volunteers and you were just amazing. I want to congratulate Carrie for winning another um few years on the school committee. That's wonderful. And of course, congratulations and welcome to Tim. It's gonna be very exciting to work with everybody in a collaborative nature. Um, I also would be totally remiss to not thank our Hingham Public Schools administration, especially all those of you who work at two-twenty Central Street. You've been an amazing support to us. Um, another silver lining is we all got together a lot on the Zoom screen over, over, over time. And um, I, I just think that there's a lot of good that's gonna come out of this and I'm, I'm very hopeful. The South School staff has been absolutely phenomenal uh as always, as all the staffs have been and have really bent over backwards. I think there's more about that later in the presentation to keep things as um exciting for the children as possible. And the students and families themselves, Tony mentioned how hard they worked, how hard it was. I was talking to a parent recently who had four children, a couple of them teenagers, and she said you'd have to drag them out of bed every day and get them going on the remote learning. My hat's off to everybody who did so much. Um, of course, the entire South School community, the wonderful PTO, who I'm gonna talk more about later, and the South School members, council members. I want to thank everybody for, it's now seventeen months of Above and Beyond. And um, somebody said recently, uh, if we can get through this, we can get through anything. So um, you know, yay, everybody. And you did absolutely phenomenal job. Before I go any further, I want to thank Lori Jacobs, who I'm pretty sure is on the call tonight. But if she's not, I hope it means that Dakota's winning the World Series. So uh, that's very important because family comes first. And I also want to thank C.C. Hyman, who gave me some technical advice today. So just very quickly, these are our school council members, obviously me. Uh, the faculty representatives are Eugene Bezinski, who happens to be a teacher leader, and our phys ed teacher. Vanessa Brier, who's an adjustment counselor, our adjustment counselor. And Joanne Smith, who pitch hit it for Vanessa when Vanessa had a baby girl in Mar. and Joanne Smith, who pitched hit it for Vanessa when Vanessa had a baby girl in March. And Joanne did a wonderful job too, stepping right on the school council and being with us. We have a great community representative also. Her name is Karen Johnson. And she had children who went through the Hingham Public Schools and has grandchildren. So it's always great to get their perspectives. We are greatly appreciative to Tracy Manning and Megan Pollens, who are two parent representatives and have done a great job this year. And I also am very sad to lose Libby because she did an absolutely fantastic job. And I thank her as well for her service to the school committee and to the schools over the years. She was also a South School parent, so I'm very grateful to her as a member of our school council this year. It's, all of this is fairly obvious. We're going to talk about the plan, the progress for 2021, some updates for 21 to 22, the SMART goal plans and ongoing themes that we love at South School. And we have a couple of new twists for you. So I think you know all of this. We meet monthly. There's a certain process that we follow. So I know you can read and I know you have that in your packets, so. And there's many considerations we use to write the school improvement plan, and these are just some of them. It, it's interesting to note that we have 495 students right now. And Dr. Austin mentioned earlier, I believe we will grow by leaps and bounds. I remember my first summer, and some of you might, as a principal, when I gained 21 first graders. So I have this funny feeling that this summer is going to be somewhat similar. And of course, we look at MCAS and DIBL's results and other assessments as well, as was previously mentioned. And like I said, focus groups and staff surveys and pretty much anything that we can look at. So the academic excellence for South School students is a number one. And this year it was so impressive what the math and reading TRI and RTI program looked like. It basically was very restricted because of COVID restrictions, but still it was all hands on deck. And even during hybrid, remote and in-person learning, there was so much done to work with the children in small groups and give extra help to the teachers so that we could make sure that math and reading instruction was the best it possibly could be under the circumstances. And I'm very proud of the job that everybody did. We added a community read this year too. Thank you, E-School, for that idea. And we all read Rules by Cynthia Lord, and I'm grateful to the PTO for supplying those books to our children and families. And we also have a wonderful reading incentive program. And I have to thank Mr. B. and Mrs. Daly, our librarian. And I will talk more about that in a little bit because I have a great picture. Our instructional support team never gave up. There's many staff members involved. It was hell over Zoom twice a month. And they did a fantastic job making sure that children who may be having difficulty learning, we're getting everything we possibly could give them under the circumstances. And all of our staff are always all about differentiated instruction and learning styles awareness. So as you'll see in a little bit, we had lots of different projects that people still hadn't hung on to. And I'm particularly proud of our PLCs at South. They all work so closely together and they collaborated morning, noon and night regardless of COVID restrictions. And I think that was just a win-win for the students. And there was still lots of training offered to staff in many areas. And I thank the administration at 220 Central Street for providing that, and especially Dr. Lubilwa, who puts together a nice professional development program every year. And there were many things that were still continued. They're not all listed here, but they are on the website. And the Teach From Anywhere model training was absolutely outstanding, the things that people have learned and they are using. I'm in classrooms watching phenomenal use of technology that has just catapulted. Another silver liner. As I mentioned, the reading and math tutor programs, all hands on deck. We did look at whatever we could. We did have some very much like E-School. We did have some data meetings and make sure that we were giving children what they needed. And this year we were lucky to get some Title I funds and we added extra tutors. And everybody worked super hard and our preliminary data is very favorable. So I'm grateful to all of them for that. And really and truly, this is another sign that the PTO provided us, and I happen to really love this picture. And the Herculean efforts during this pandemic, you know, I want to tear up. I have goosebumps and I have happy tears at the same time. And I know all the staffs across town, I've talked so much with the other principals, have really worked hard. But I want to give a special thank you to the South School staff for their Herculean efforts during the pandemic. They worked so hard with the academics and they worked so hard with the social emotional. And, you know, we could get on the loudspeaker if a bus schedule changed or whatever and just say, can anyone come help? And people would just come out of the woodwork. So they've been absolutely amazing. And I can't thank them enough. There's just not enough time in the day to thank them for everything that they did. In case you think this is Mr. B. in real life, it's not. It's a cutout of Mr. B., which we had all over the school for our reading incentive program. And as you can tell, I'm not super tall, but I don't think of myself as super short, but he's, he was the tallest person in the building. So that's why we picked him. And the PTO paid to have this cardboard cutout made of him and the kids just loved it. At one point I got a mask put on it. As you can imagine, all kinds of things happened to it. We're tempted to turn it into a flat Stanley kind of thing right now and have it travel. But the reading incentive program really took off. And it took off at a time, like you pointed out earlier, Michelle, it was so difficult. We were all dealing with so many difficult things because people were really suffering. And this took off at a time, it kind of, kind of focused the kids on something different at the same time as the community read. In January and February, those three things kind of got us through that very bleak period. And they had to read enough books in each classroom that got as tall as Mr. B. So every day I would go through and they were very excited. Once they did that, Mr. B. came to stay in their classroom for a little while. He hung out in the hallways in the very beginning. And many, many staff members said they, they got frightened by him a couple of times when they came around the corner. But he got frightened by himself the most. But once everyone got used to having him around, it was absolutely fantastic. And the reading program just took off. There was, as I said earlier, oops, sorry. As I said earlier, there were so many things that people did to hold on to the kinesthetic collaborative learning. And it just amazed me. It continued despite the pandemic. So you can see a nice little list there. We have some pictures of the wedding of Q and U. And grade one is still doing their musical. It's half live, half recorded, as you'll see in pictures. Grade two still did their poetry writing, grade three, their bottle project, and the state's parade in grade four. And of course, grade five is having their booth day tomorrow outside in the back alley where they put together their projects that are either provinces in Canada or countries in Central and South America, where we try to celebrate diversity and make sure we understand who else is in the Western Hemisphere. They also did Hingham History Mystery virtually and just it's, I could go on and on and on. And I know you don't want me to because it makes for a long night, but everything people did was absolutely phenomenal to try to make school as typical as possible. And everyone helped with the opening and with keeping kids interested and involved. And as I've always said, the students were happy. They were happy every day, you know? They did a little mask on, their little smiles. They were just so happy, happy, happy. And as you can see, we had the wedding of Q and U. It was a little bit of a rainy day, kind of like the day Mrs. Eastwood and I got married, but they say that's good luck. Or a sunny day in Ireland, as they would say. So we had the wedding of Q and U. Then the first grade musical. Thank you, H-CAM, and especially Nancy O'Connor, our music sub, and all the first grade team. They worked really hard to carry on the first grade musical despite the COVID protocols. And very soon, we're all going to watch that as a school and we're very excited. Second grade did their normal poetry writing. And it's funny, if you look on the screen in the middle one, some of you who might remember the Albertis, Mary and Bill Alberti. Bill is still Liam the poet and he comes in and he came to us via Zoom. So we were very grateful for that. And second grade was happy with that. Here's the third grade bottle project. Students got to present and very excited the day they brought them to school. Grade four did a states floats project, as well as many other things. These are just examples. And grade five did a wax museum of famous Americans. And we were, that was after things kind of loosened up a little bit. So we were able to have them do their little wax museum. It's out really well. So goal number two is just as important as goal number one, probably more so as we go into post-pandemic time. And that's of course, to develop the physical, emotional wellbeing and awareness of social responsibilities. And we did everything we possibly could in this category. And when I say everything, I mean everything. We had our buzz assemblies, many of them, they were all on Zoom. I'm really hoping to have a final one outside in the next few days so that we can get together. Every month continued, you know, we always do the welcome in October, honor veterans in November, thank families in June. And we've got our songs that we were just playing this year. But I don't know if you know me very well, but I love to sing. So I'm dying to get school back together to be able to sing. So looking forward to that next year. And Mrs. Jacobs did a great job along with it. I need to thank Lori Barry and of course, PM Graham, who is, who is our Sharon Hall in the office and have done, did an amazing job with the reopening. It was so much extra work and everyone just stepped up to the plate and did what was right for the kids, which was phenomenal. And so we did some bulletin boards around Thanksgiving and Valentine's and inclusion themes. And I thank Jordan Griffith for that one. And we'll show those to you in a couple of minutes. Of course, our Be Kinder Than Necessary theme is always present. And we do have vertical teams as well, our Bee Hives. We could not have those this year. We'll look forward to reinstating those next year. And of course, it's all about kindness all the time. And we just love Toolbox. Again, I want to thank Dr. Lubilwa and his team who brought us Toolbox. And that was very alive and well this year. As I said, a Toolbox program was, oops, a great success. I'm sorry, my little laptop's very sensitive. And there's end of the year activities at all grade levels. Every grade level did something. And I'm very grateful to Mr. B. and Ally Rena, one of our parents, and several volunteers who also did like at E-School, a mini field day. We had our first one today and it was absolutely fabulous. And our second one will be tomorrow. And we're all going to be watching the first grade musical and we're going to livestream our talent show this year. So we're very much looking forward to that. Also, all of the teams worked out moving forward activities so children can transfer to the next grade level. And they did those in a safe way and whatever worked for each grade level. So there are many examples of that. In case you forgot your tools, everybody's been using their tools every single day. Especially today at South, we had a couple of situations where we had to evacuate the building because of something in the HVAC system, which I'm greatly appreciative to the maintenance department and Doug Foley, that that is rapidly got worked on, but the children used all their tools, probably all today for sure. So I'm grateful to them as well and the staff. So the Toolbox is just a wonderful thing. I have all my nieces and nephews doing it with their kids as well. The PTO, again, just like the East PTO, and I'm sure across town, Dr. Austin sees that in the all PTO meetings. Just were amazing. They provided so much. They provided, you know, nice little gifts for staff to welcome them back, constantly doing things for staff, including Educator Appreciation Week. And then many of the things listed here, the welcome back signs. They provided water and snacks all year because it was hard if children forgot their things. We had a jack-o'-lantern parade. We had story and cocoa with the principal at holiday time. And I will admit, it was my first time to have 300 faces that were looking at my face on Zoom. So that was a little nerve wracking for me. So I greatly appreciated what all the educators have gone through, but we've all gotten used to it now. We had a wonderful festival of lights. It was a Valentine cookie drive where you could pick up cookies and decorate them. And the fifth grade leadership team donated the money to charity. Teacher Appreciation Week, they knocked it out of the park. There were many cultural enrichment programs. We had a visit from Sally Ride. We had a visit from Susan B. Anthony. We had a visit from Plymouth Plantation. We had a visit from beautiful Irish step video, just to name a few. There were many, many, many. And they sponsored many end of the year activities as well. So as you can see, a lot of things that we typically do, and I know I've got a former PTO president here at South School, and I know at all the schools, we still did them. And that's, to me, that's just incredible that happened. So as I said earlier, I'm grateful to Mrs. Jacobs who put together some collages for me. So these are some of the things that went on to show the happy life in the school. There was a picture on the top left of our Table for One Sports Cafe. The kids were either Bruins. I hope they're doing well tonight. Celtics, Patriots or Red Sox. And that worked out really well for organization. Added a little bit of fun when they came back to school and the underlying, you know, obviously it also helped if we needed to contact trace. So thank God we didn't. So our butterflies is still flying. We still have our bee. There's a lot of things that are live and well across the Hingham Public Schools and definitely at South School. So here's another. You can see the jack-o'-lantern parade and many things that happened throughout the year. Lori's pretty partial to this picture of the rocking chairs. Those are all going to go back in the classrooms, hopefully, hopefully for September. And lots of pictures of the kids. Because that's what it's all about. That's why we're here. And we had buzz assemblies in spite of it all. So you can see some of them on the screen. Some of the children are at home. Some of the children are at school in the classrooms, watching them on the smart boards. We did them when all the children were remote and we also continue to do them. And as I said, I have a dream, Mr. B.'s going to help me with, with sound. And we're hoping to do a live one outside before we go. So we'll be together again soon. And we have chalkboards all over the building. I don't know if you know this, but years ago, one of our secretaries kind of called Ms. Thompson, you might remember her. She got a call from this company that wanted to give away $10,000 and she happily took it. And they put in the building all these beautiful chalkboards that really contributed to that social emotional welfare of the children. They even make me happy when I walk around. As a matter of fact, I asked them not to wash them before September. So when I'm walking around by myself in the summer, they're all there. These are the bulletin boards, a sample of them that I mentioned earlier. At Thanksgiving, we had, we are thankful for, and it was the children wrote one. Everybody wrote one. And we did a raffle and collected money for families or anybody who was in need. I'm grateful to Mrs. Graham and Mrs. Barry who did, that's a picture of the staff. We're all in gingerbread. People, and those of you who know me pretty well will laugh because they put me, put me in red high heels. The, the inclusion bulletin board, as I mentioned, was done in March with the rainbow and all of the children wrote what inclusion meant to them. And these are just some other samples of things around the school. Just try to keep spirits up. So obviously kindness, be kinder than necessary. We all want to teach our children that. This is our theme book, What Does It Mean to Be Kind? And you'll see Dr. Lubilwa there being kind on Zoom. And you'll see Dr., you'll also see Dr. Austin wearing the birthday crown. He was a really good sport when he came to visit on his birthday. And children made Valentines and did all kinds of things throughout the year. So we wanted to show a little bit of that, a little slice of normal, as they say. We kept trying to give them a slice of normal because it's very important. And obviously we communicated all this to our parents. Again, I stole something from Dr. Lubilwa. Ideas have to be aviated and navigated, then communicated. So I kept letting my families know that. It's not that I don't want to tell you things, but I'm busy aviating, navigating before I communicate. So there was a lot of that in the newsletters. We kept the Toolbox tidbits so the parents could have that in there. We're all about the common language. So that's in the newsletter. It's on the announcements. It's everywhere. You really can't escape us without knowing that we want to be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn, and of course, be kinder than necessary. We welcome new families with open arms as always. We had fast facts this year. We had a night, as I know all the other principals did too, on September 3rd, trying to answer questions. And there were many PTO question sessions and just constant communication. Anytime anybody called or they wanted something, we of course tried to answer their question as long as we were aviated and navigated. We had a great focus group in March. We actually had a lot of new families. And they commented on how grateful they are to be in Hingham and were very complimentary in general. They had children in a lot of grade levels. And our fifth grade leadership team, my goodness, they continued it virtually. There were many highlights, especially the grounds cleanup and donations to charity. I do want to make a special note that many, many parents have reached out and said how grateful they are for the extra effort that was necessary in the COVID reality. So I think it's important to point that out. There are many, many people out there that are truly grateful, but we are also truly grateful to them. So I always say it takes a village and the village was outstanding, absolutely phenomenal. I know that's true across town. Obviously, number five is very important. It's our safety goal and protocols were strictly adhered to, especially with COVID and we had all new entrances. Actually, some of these things we're going to keep. We like that one. Grade levels going entrances near their teachers and things like that. So there's a lot of things we're going to keep that, you know, again, silver linings. I mentioned the cafe table for one sports cafe already. And obviously we train staff every year and all of these things, and we communicate to parents as well. Now, this is, there were moments, we'll be honest, because we're human, where we actually thought we would end up looking like these two characters. And either that's Mrs. Jacobs on the right in the middle, and that's me on the left. And oh, I've got my red high heels on. There we go. And we actually thought we were going to end up like these two characters. But we didn't. And we are at the end, still standing. I want to break into that song, I'm Still Standing. And we're ready to go. We are ready to go. And our theme for 21 to 22 is Back to the Future. So we are very excited, making comeback South School 21 to 22. So we're ready to go back to the future. And Ms. Jay just had a blast bringing these pictures together. She just loves this kind of stuff. So again, I'm grateful for that. And so I'll just quickly, a big thing for 21, 22 and follow one is we're so excited. Thank you for that budget that you mentioned earlier, to fully integrate new staff positions to collaborate and enhance HTSS. We're going to add a full-time math specialist and we added a readings, we're adding reading specialists, tutors and interventionists. We're very excited planning for that. How we're going to do these things and where we're going to put people and all that kind of stuff. It's, it's how I feel about company. The more the merrier. I'll figure out a place to put you and it's just awesome. We're going to enhance all of our initiatives and go back to a lot of things that weren't working, do some of the things we learned from the silver lining. We're going to further facilitate all of our programs, everyday math journeys, reflex math and student incentive programs. We've got the school one. I'll tell you about it in a minute. And of course, professional collaboration, our PLCs are just amazing. Staff peer observations, a great thank you mentoring program for that. Mr. Kidi talked a lot about analyzing data and we do very similar. data and we do very similar to them. So we are going to do that as well. And number two, very important, social emotional. We're going to continue all the things we've been doing. So I don't need to go through all of that. And um, we came up with this idea that we're going to have Buzz Box and we're going to have a school store and we're hoping to get the kids to do more reflex and Lexia. So uh lots of things like that. We're going to go back to our singing and um, you know, they say a family that sings together stays together. So that's huge. So we're going back to all of that. And obviously our communication will hopefully be top notch and people will get all kinds of communication about everything we're doing. And back to the future, what can we reinstate? We've already had a uh conversation to PTO. There's some things that we look back on and go, you know, that wasn't so wonderful and we weren't so happy. We didn't have that, you know, that, you know, there are some things that we can, you know, maybe streamline and maybe add some new things. So we're looking forward to our, it takes a village theme and of course, our be kind of the necessary as we go back to the future, but we're also looking forward to some new things. And um obviously we'll have our back to school nights, hopefully, and our new families reception and our open PTO meetings and our South School social and our open door policy. And oh, I did take out that Officer John and I must want to save that, right? We now have Officer Caitlin. Uh, hopefully she'll come back and do the cyber safety. And um our adjustment counselor does so much with Toolbox and we will continue it. And we're hoping to go back to what we had in the past. We had South School Has Talent Night, South School Shines Night, and we did do them twice in 18 and 19. So we're looking forward to doing that in 20, it'll be 22. And this year, we had a little mini art show outside. So we're thinking, hey, we'll do it outside. So we're going to gain that from the pandemic as well. So immediately in timely communication, there'll be a number one. And we're so excited about Kids in Action coming back and we're hoping to bring back Fly South, which is our little program we do after school where the children to get to do some extra um activities and homework here. Is a big favorite of parents. Obviously safety, we will follow Dr. Austin mentioned earlier. We don't know what DES is going to tell us to do, but we're going to follow safety, safety protocols if um needed. And of course, regular safety protocols. They're always very important. The children showed us today that they knew how to evacuate the building. Very proud of them. And they used their patience tools and they were absolutely fantastic. So keeping up that awareness of safety and what we do. So again, we're going to work on that differentiated instruction. We're going to go back to the future. We're going to promote that sound mind and a healthy body. And we're hoping to add um even more with the physical healthy body, keeping children healthy as we go back to the future. And we always say, it takes a village to prepare the child for the path to the future now. So thank you all for being so amazing and being such a part of it. And I thank the South, South School Village. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. And as, as we said to Mr. Keady earlier, thank you so much to you and your, and your staff and the parents and, and the kids, just the way everyone's navigated this. Um, that's, I'm, I'm missing my time itself listening, watching all this. So um, and I, and also I'm very much on board with the Flat Stanley idea. So does anyone on the committee have any questions? Jen?
Thanks. Just want to quickly, just a comment. Um, just thank you to Mary and to Lori and just the entire staff and teachers, the PTO, the entire South community. You know, you all came together and you helped one another as the entire school here. As you say, you're a village and your village has gone above and beyond. Um, just all make such an amazing difference in all the students that you have there. Um, my, my last year itself, I have, my oldest is moving on. So it's a little bittersweet to hear all the amazing things done itself this year. So I followed you all and I love the back to the future.
It'd be very sad to see you standing up when we honor those parents who leave. So it's always tough to lose them, but you're always part of the village, which is true, I'm sure at East and Foster and Plymouth River as well. Thanks, Jen.
Carlos?
Mary, I think I, I, I may say this uh every year, uh but let me tell you, I enjoy your presentation, your energy. You truly exemplify what the, a good public servant is all about. And uh, you know, thank you very, very much for all that you bring to our schools. It is so awesome to see um how the six of you principals of our schools get along so well and uh in, in do your job with passion. And I just wanted to, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Um, you know, along with the other principals, but uh great presentation and I am joined your council this new year and I'm looking forward to. So thank you very much for everything.
Oh, good. Be careful because we might get you in singing at a buzz assembly or something. I hope you like to sing. Um, I do, I want to reiterate too. I want to thank the other principals. Uh, some of our best ideas itself have come from all of them and they're just all phenomenal and they're always willing to share. Um, I do, I do want to thank Tony for having the dinosaur in his presentation tonight so that I wasn't the dinosaur because I do think I'm, I'm getting to that point. But I want to thank Tony for, you know, taking the dinosaur into his presentation.
Michelle, did you have something?
I do. I, I've been thinking, yes, I've been listening to all the presentations, particularly at the elementary schools. Like if I were a new parent to Hingham, which one, which of these schools would I want to pick? And I think I would like, can I just take all of them? So I'm just chuckling, watching this like these last couple night or this last couple meetings because I mean, when life handed the entire world this big sour lemon, the Hingham Public Schools, the, particularly at the elementary schools, you really did make a big vat of lemonade out of it. So really kudos to all of you and for sharing that. Um, one thing that I was thinking, and thank you for bringing up the thought about things that you want to keep and things that, you know, maybe can go away now that you've realized like, yeah, maybe that doesn't resonate anymore. But one thing that I just remembered when you were talking about curriculum and back to school nights, I hope that folks will think about it because we did get a lot of feedback at the beginning of the school year that parents really liked being able to attend virtually. Um, particularly parents who maybe like the Medco parents who might not be able to get to Boston or people who work um in healthcare or in retail or food service who work evening. So I think if we could figure out a way to keep some of that, um, so that we keep that family connection would be great.
I have someone who works in healthcare and he works nice weekends holidays. So I get it. So yeah, actually I think the hybrid idea that Carrie talked about earlier is a fantastic idea. So um, yeah, absolutely. We'll consider that. And I think lemonade K through 12 too. I really do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mary. I just have one suggestion of, you know, doing something that worked. You might want to think about having an outdoor movie night in August to show back to the future because some of us with older kids, I'll leave it that way. We knew that movie, but maybe your parents don't know the movie as well and they might have, it might be fun for them to see Marty McFly.
That's a fantastic idea. The only thing is, is it rated G?
Well, maybe it's for parents.
That's a fantastic idea.
Maybe it's the first PTO social or something.
Actually.
But thank you for all your energy. Um, it's, it's always fun to see. So thanks.
Well, I thank all of you because really and truly it's, you know, what a service you all do. And it's such a blessing. And just thank you all, including the central office staff. Just, and you got us through, you rose us up, you raised me up.
We will talk tomorrow about that picture use of uh me in the crown.
That's Lori. Just call Lori. I have nothing.
Okay. I don't see anything else from the committee. If anyone in the public has any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Um, thank you again, Mary, for that presentation and for everything you did this year. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you all.
Okay, next we have 7.3, which is to review the school committee operating protocols. These are in the packet. Um, it's something we started doing, I think, two years ago, just kind of an agreement for each committee each year about how we're going to conduct ourselves and our business. Um, so take a look at that. I think what we'll do is vote on that next time on the 21st. So if anyone has any comments or questions on it now that they wanted to bring up, then you can. Otherwise, we can just talk about it um next time. And then what we'll do is we'll just all sign it and then we'll put it on the website. Um, so. But if anyone has any other ideas or, or feedback on it, then just let us know. Next, 7.4, to appoint a school committee member or designate to participate in the MSBA review and interview of designer candidates relative to the foster school feasibility study. Um, Dr. Austin, do you or John want to talk about this?
Yeah, I can. Um, so the foster building committee uh is entering, as we know, the next phase of feasibility uh and is going to work collaboratively with the MSBA to select a project designer. Um, their work will include a review of the applicants, uh conducting interviews and uh providing input for selection of a uh project designer. Uh, meetings for the work will likely be held virtually are, and are scheduled for the 20th of July and again on August 3rd. Um, those meetings will take um a, a good part of the day. Um, so just be prepared for that. Uh, and so tonight, the school committee uh needs to appoint a member or designate uh to participate in that process. Um, and uh I know that Michelle Eyre uh is already a member of the building committee and she has expressed interest in doing that. Uh, but the uh school committee should uh address that and find out if there's anybody else interested and then take a vote um to determine who that uh representative is going to be. Hello, John, is there anything else, John? I missed out of that at all?
No, um, I don't think you missed anything, but is the, I think the important issue is that me, you know, Michelle was on the um, on the school uh building committee and that she's familiar, becoming more and more familiar with MSBA process and working with the OPM and the other designers that uh will be, you know, leading us through this, this pri- uh process of feasibility. And then furthermore, even leading us through the design. So um, you know, while the, the designer selection process, the MSBA puts out says there's three uh people that can participate, one appointed by the school committee, one appointed by um the, the superintendent and the other appointed by the town administrator. What it does make sense is to, to have school building committee members be sort of those that are appointed by them. So I think Michelle's an excellent candidate and I'm glad she's willing to uh um, you know, put the, put the effort in. Um, it will be full days. That, that July 20th and 3rd will be full days. I guess um from what we hear, they go through a very rigorous process of that selection. And they do in fact weigh Hingham's three representatives um very significantly, even though there's 13 of the MSBA. So it's 13 MSBA and there's three Hingham representatives, but they weigh their, their views very heavily, which is important because ultimately it will be those building committee members that are working with these designers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, yeah. And thank you, Michelle, for, for volunteering to, to do this and then giving us even more of your time. Um, does anyone have any comments or questions? Liza?
I have a question. John, who are the other two building committee members who are, have they been designated?
The other two that were, expressed the interest were Ray Estes and um Jennifer Murphy. So uh, and both will be um, both will be selected. The school building committee will be um meeting Wednesday and they'll just formalize all this and take a vote, even though I think the appointments go from somewhere. But we like to always take votes for the MSBA so that they can't say, oh, where was your vote?
Yeah. So is one of the three is supposed to be a school committee member? Is that the idea or is this just the recommendation of the, I'm not questioning it, I'm just curious.
Um, you know, it, it said it should be designated by the school committee.
Okay.
But not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily have to be a school committee member, but I think, you know, to the extent Michelle wanted to do this, I think it's an excellent selection.
Yeah. No, no, that explains it. But thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments or questions on this? Okay, seeing none. Um, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Thank you. Um, I will make a motion that the school committee appoint Michelle Eyre as its representative to participate in the review, interview and selection of a project designer for the foster school feasibility study.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Um, Michelle?
Sorry, I didn't want to do my mute button. Bye.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you very much to Michelle and also to Ray and to Jen for, for volunteering for this.
Thank you.
Um, number eight is subcommittee and project reports. Um, so I don't know if we have anything, but Michelle, who wants to start?
Um, I don't have anything.
We were just changing everything up.
I know, exactly.
Uh, Jen, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Uh, Ness?
Um, I do. We had our final East School Council meeting on the 26th of May. Um, there's some warrants in your packet and also um as part of the equity and inclusion um equity audit that we were doing, we've been doing some courageous conversations um to date. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Carlos?
Uh, is nap, uh last meeting, uh bond meeting is tomorrow and uh just a reminder to everyone that Friday is the cocktail at the South Shore Country Club. So if you guys would like to come, uh, just let us know.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Tim? No? Okay, Liza?
Um, just on Wednesday, June 16th, we have another negotiation with the food service workers.
Great. Thank you. Um, and I don't have anything. So next is nine other items, as may not reasonably known, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle?
I.
Jen?
I.
Ness?
I.
Carlos?
I.
Tim?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well.